Welcome everyone to the Borough Council Work Session. No council action is taking place during the work session. Mr. Bernier, do you have a trivia question for us?
I do.
Good.
This past weekend, I was fortunate enough to tour the Gettysburg Battle on horseback. I'm wondering if anyone could tell me how many horses were involved in the Battle of Gettysburg.
Oh wow.
Two thousand.
It's an excellent guess.
But not close.
What, what?
How many horses?
She said two thousand.
Two thousand.
One more side.
Huh?
Total horses. Anyone who was just there yesterday. They said you can do big chart.
Seventy-two thousand horses and mules were used in the Battle of Gettysburg.
Oh wow.
Three thousand were killed. One resident, Linda Lester, whose home was used by General Mead, found seventeen dead horses in her yard alone after the battle. Not even close to how many horses we lost in a battle. In World War I, uh-oh, where's my number? Eight million horses, donkeys, and mules died over the course of World War I.
Oh my goodness.
Anything to cheer us up.
It's a lot of animals.
Thank you, Ken.
Do you know where the first shot at Gettysburg was happened?
I do.
Where?
Well, I know that a soldier from Beaufort's Cavalry leaned his rifle against a fence he closed and fired at the Confederates that were approaching town, but I don't know exactly where.
It's at the intersection of Knoxville Road and US Route 30. There is no, there's no sign there, but they used to stop in front of my in-laws' house with the buses to go look at the sign.
I was gonna say, I'm hoping you told us how you know that.
That's how I know it.
It's an interesting place.
A lot of horses.
Yeah. You had a great weekend.
Yeah, it was good weather.
Thank you, Ken. We'll move on to some business then, and that would be item A. The first item is Environmental Advisory Board Survey Discussion. So, I don't know, Deb, do you want to lead off?
I'll give it a shot. I'd like to thank all the contributors who helped put the survey together and all the community members who responded with input regardless of what it is. All the information that we've gathered will be helpful in making decisions. The purpose of the Climate Sustainability Survey was to ask, to assess community interest in sustainability. The EAB met with DBI, the BIACC, Historic Bellefontaine Inc., and the Bellefontaine Historical and Cultural Association to help us in creating the survey. We had two-hundred-and-thirty-three total responses. Sixty-four people have requested a copy of the survey results and twenty-one have expressed interest in assisting with the EAB educational programs.
I have a question for one second. Seanette, are you getting her, are folks able to hear her?
I'm hearing.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
And how about the audience? Are you guys hearing her? Okay, thank you. Thanks, sorry, Deb.
That's okay. I need a prod every once in a while. The data collected will be used for planning educational workshops based on the areas of interest indicated. The intent is that the workshops will be coordinated with organizations that volunteer their time and effort. So in your packet, there were two, there's one document in your packet that outlines the areas of interest. I just listed them. There were different topics, like the Climate Action Plan, energy efficiency, and so on, and I listed the responses for each of those questions under the topic, which gives you an idea of how many people are interested in educational programs for any of these topics. And the one that got the most response is a general overview of climate action plan. The other is the handout that's at your, at your spot, and it's the results of the questions about activities you could do inside or outside your home that are sustainable practices. And I thought it was pretty interesting that overall, the majority of people are already doing a number of these items or are considering doing it. I don't know whether it's surprising or not that anything to do with transportation is in the not interested list. So this evening, we have Alana Balrich from PSU and Stephanie Peters from the Chamber. Either of you would like to contribute or answer questions?
Sure.
Yes, please, please go up.
Yes. Yeah, thank you, and thank you for your continued work on making your community the best it can be.
Can we read your name, please?
Alana Balrich with Penn State and the Sustainable Communities Collaborative, the program of the Sustainability Institute at Penn State. All right, so I serve in an advisory role, I guess, a volunteer role on the committee. My hope is that I can act as a liaison to the borough and the committee's efforts and Penn State resources for workshops, presentations, and things of that nature, as well as connecting more specific, discrete projects with Penn State classes. That's really my main job. This is how I got to know some of you, working with the Borough of Bellefontaine for a number of years on very defined projects. So my role on the committee is just kind of as a liaison to the great resource in the neighboring community. I do want to commend the work of this committee. Bellefontaine was the first one, or one of the very first ones, to engage in the local climate action planning program that was offered back then through DEP that has now moved to my office at Penn State. So my colleague and Brandy Robinson, who is an instructor in the College of Earth and Mineral Sciences, now run that program on behalf of DEP statewide, and it's fairly successful. So you are already light years ahead. I also want to really praise the committee for their patience in wanting to move forward slowly and bringing people on board. This is really, really important, and I think the responses you saw on the survey, especially the would consider one, right, reflect, and maybe even the not practical ones, reflect a knowledge gap. You know, it's people would consider certain things, probably the continuation of that sentence would be if we had more information, right? So I think the work the committee is doing is very promising, and I hope that my office can be of further assistance, and I'd be happy to answer any specific questions.
Patty, where's this?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Does council have any questions about the survey, or the results, or the way it's been reporting, or general comments?
Well, we had talked before the meeting just started about getting them emailed, type, however you guys are gonna put that together so that people can see that. I think that should go out to the public as well for their review.
So the plan is that I'm process crafting a letter to the sixty-four people who requested a copy of the survey results, and a separate letter than ones who have expressed interest in assisting with the EAB. What we don't know and didn't get from the survey is what, what the people who are interested in assisting with the EAB have to offer. Some of them may be experts in a particular area that they'd like to do an educational program. Some of them may just want some, put more input besides what they put in the survey. We don't know that yet, so we still have to follow up on that. What I would also like to do is to, if it's possible, is to put this one and the other.
The one that's in the packet?
The environmental survey results, areas of interest, on the website. So people who did not fill out the survey would be able to have that information as well. So there will be two documents that go on the website. And then if people want to have more, have further questions, they can contact the EAB.
Any other comments or questions?
I do have a question. Who entered all the surveys that were paper?
I did. And whatever they said, including typos, I put the typos in.
Okay. So there wasn't any borough time involved in that then?
None. The only borough time was Alyssa putting them in a folder for me to pick up and enter.
Okay.
You said there was an overall review of the EPA, and how did, where's that at? I didn't see it anywhere. Is it in, is it in the?
You mean, it was in the packets, this. This was the one that's called Environmental Advisory Board Survey Results, Areas of Interest. And there's also one other.
Because that all says is general overview one oh one.
Yeah. And then there's another one that's seventy-seven pages long?
At least, when I, if you go to the borough website and the page where the public can access the entire council packet, the entire document is in there.
This is the copy, alright.
Yeah, that's, that's the one with the graphs and the comments, that's.
And that, each council member has access to this?
Yes.
I, I thought that Julie was helping out with some of this data compiling.
She, she helped put together the graphics. We tried to do it, and we couldn't figure it out.
Well, when Rita asked the question, I think you didn't mention that she did a lot of work for this.
But she said entering the data. She did not say compile.
Well, I think that, I didn't, not just overall, I was, she was curious. I'm speaking for you.
Yes, I, that was what I meant. I wanted to know overall how much staff time was involved, and I should have phrased the question differently, but yes.
When you said who entered the data, that was me.
Okay.
Okay. And I think Dawn has spent some time with the EAB.
He attends the meetings, yes.
But we don't have those totals of staff time?
We can probably estimate, but we weren't, we weren't able to track that.
Right, right. No, I think that went to your question.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So, for me, Julie, this is a lot to absorb when I just got it today.
Yeah.
And I find it very thorough. Some of them, some of the questions I don't think are, you know, you can make them relate, but some of them I'm a little bit sketchy on. And I was surprised that the age bracket from fifty-six to over sixty-five were the most responders. When I looked at it quickly, within the last hour or two, when I went through it, I think there's a lot to absorb here, and I wonder where we need to put the time and effort on our priorities when I read some of the comments in here from the general public. That's just some, some real quick skimming that I did. And I agree that the, the one comment, the tan colored one, this is not practical, that's not the one, neutral. There, like, the comment was that most of the people were in that category. And then there's some I think we could throw out almost immediately, like the transportation. I was as surprised as you were seeing, it was like fifty percent had no interest at all, maybe even a little more than that. Was shocked, I was a little surprised at that, but that sort of goes along with this CADA proposal to withdraw the bus service.
The one thing I would like to see, that the data we gave you, is we haven't broken it down by business versus residence. And I suspect that if you, that the businesses are more interested in the transportation area than the residents.
I don't think it demonstrated that in here.
I don't know, that's what.
I looked at it quickly, but that's for another.
Speaking of businesses, I didn't see what you, what you have there. All I saw was what came in on what you guys sent us during the packet.
It is in the packet.
But there wasn't much, there wasn't much business on what I saw listed on here.
Very few businesses.
Which is not very many. But I don't think it's fair for just me having this conversation with you two. The rest of the council hasn't seen all this information, obviously.
They were set up the materials, the agenda on Friday.
It is in the packet, it's huge.
Okay, I went with my paper packet that I had, so I didn't really look at them.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying, but if you look at the handout that I gave you, that, you know, areas of interest, the total number of responses for each of those items is on the left, and out of two-hundred-and-thirty-three responses to get two-hundred-and-twenty-nine, two-hundred-and-thirty people answering those questions means that in spite of the comments, and they are across the board.
Yeah.
I was surprised that we got that many responses to these areas of interest of where things you can do inside and outside your home, because I figured that one type of question might mean that there's nothing else filled in on the survey.
Well, I, I looked at the business one that said, well, here's one. My business or organization would benefit from public sector initiatives such as community solar programs. There were nineteen responders only.
Right.
And strongly disagree, disagree neutral was ten, fifty percent of the responders. So that's, that's not very impressive to me, to go in that direction, but that's something that council will have to decide. But that was an example of where I thought that wasn't very many business responders.
Right, and it may not be practical for businesses in a town like this that's mostly rentals.
Sure.
For storefronts to be involved with solar programs.
Yeah, I'm just using that as a response of how many responded in the business section.
Right.
And I thought it was consistently twenty, but I could be wrong.
I think if I saw anything like that for businesses, it was more like they didn't really want to do it, they were okay with it, but they would rather have it done through the borough or through the county, stuff like that.
County or state or feds.
Yeah, right.
But that, that was a quick look through. Is there more discussion?
No, just thank you for everybody who participated, because there is a lot of information.
It was very nicely done.
There's a lot of information.
So we're supposed to evaluate this every three years, and I think this is the year, isn't it?
Yes.
So I would definitely look for a, look for a.
So I think what we can do is now that we have the community interest in more detail than we did three years ago, the EAB can start looking, saying, what is it we need to do moving forward?
If that's what this council chooses to do, that, that will have to be decided not by one or two people. Based on what you see here in the survey, then we'll have more discussion and decide what, what road we want to go on.
So am I clear? This is, this is a committee, because this was formed before some of us were even on. This is a committee of council, is that correct?
I don't know how to answer that. Can you help me out?
I think it started as a environmental committee of council, and then it has expanded into an advisory board. Now, I guess that was set up to do the climate action plan. So initially, it was a committee, a standing committee of council.
Oh, the environmental committee.
Yeah. And then it got expanded based on recommendations from DEP to include experts like Alana, like Stephanie, to represent greater parts of the community, so it was not just a council-based board.
So I guess the question is, did we approve this committee as council? Is that the question you have?
I don't know. I wasn't sure how it started. I kind of got the idea it was a committee, but I didn't really know.
I don't know. I mean, at that point, you were council president, so did you do the ordinance?
Basically, when we, when, as I, what we had was when the E, the Climate Action Plan was passed, there was a section in there about creating the EAB. So we followed the guidelines of the Climate Action Plan and created the EAB administratively because it was, it was part of the Climate Action Plan. And so Dawn and I worked together to try to find the group of people that would meet those criteria the DEP had set up.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other comments?
So there will be further discussion on a further, a later work session, then? Is that what?
My suggestion would be read through the documents that you received. Read through the environmental action plan, compare it with this, where this fits into that, and make your comments and questions based on the two documents.
And I did have questions on the previous survey as well. I had wanted to see the information from that, too. Is that possible to resurrect that? I, Dawn will have to answer that, I don't know.
I'm not sure, Rita. I can't answer it right now. I, I have to go back and see if I can find all the documentation. I probably, I know I have most of it in old emails, but whether I have it in a folder, after everything was compiled, we had a student working on it, so there was a lot of back and forth, but I can, I can check. A lot of the document, a lot of the documentation, as I recall, was done by either DEP or the student, because we couldn't, we couldn't get the information, for example, on all the people that utilized natural gas, for example. That was a, that had to be done by DEP. They had to work with Columbia Gas to get that. And then the railroad was another issue that we couldn't get information on, and that was done by Ickley, the third party that was helping with the project.
Okay. One more question, comment. This, this document, Climate Action Plan, is on our website, the borough website. So anybody here can go view it. Anybody in the public can go to our borough website and see this document. This information, is it on our website as well?
Not yet.
But it will be, is that correct?
That's what I just requested.
Okay. So both of these documents for the public will be accessible and can be viewed, right? So please do that, and send your comments to any council member or our borough manager, or would you like a direct?
Well, it can go directly to me, my email is on the website.
Or it can go to Deb Clayton's email, or any council member. Okay?
Is it possible to get a paper copy of the doc, this, my packet?
Yes, sure. Just send me an email, we'll have it some printed. I'll print whoever wants one, because it's a lot of paper.
I know, I know. Is it back, front and back here?
We can do that, we can make it that way, yeah.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
This I printed myself, fifty-four pages. But it's all good? Okay, can we move on to the next item now? All right, item B, new police report format. Chief Weaver, how you doing, council?
Okay. So in an effort to be, to have more transparency, accountability, and for recognition, I spoke with Barman, the mayor, and we had decided that there needs to be, there is a need for a new format to, to give to council and to be open to the public, so that they have access, just like our one is. So if you look, okay, so the first page will look like, you know, will look like this. It'll have, the highlights will be anything that we've done above and over and above our duties, or just a brief synopsis of myself, the detective, and supervisors.
Thanks, Rita.
Thank you.
The SROs, whenever they're in school. And then anything else that an officer does, like, for instance, one officer is going to be awarded Officer of the Year award, that'll be on the highlight page. It's just a, you know, very brief synopsis of what happened, extra above and beyond during the course of a month. And also, there'll be a message from the chief to the public on that. So moving on to the second page.
I'm just gonna scroll.
Scroll down. So this is where we, where you will see all the monthly activity for the department itself as a whole. And then we'll break it down into how many calls, supplements. A supplement is a, something that an officer does after a call. He might have to go to another house to do a little follow-up or investigation on the call that he had. He'll, or it could happen a day after or a couple hours after the initial incident or call, and he will, that's documented by him calling out, him or her calling out to county nine-one-one and, you know, staying on the radio where he's going to be or she's going to be and what they're doing, and it records it, time, you know, time spent there. Criminal complaints, that's after an arrest is made or an incident happens, where an officer will type the charges. Non-traffic citation, that's pretty self-explanatory, that would be a summary level citation, it's a criminal arrest. However, it's a, it's a summary level where it's not on your criminal record unless it's a, Ken, help me, unless it's a retail theft. Okay, accident reports, reportable and non-reportable, warrants, served and issued, and person stop. So person stop is like a vehicle stop, but person's on foot. Could be a suspicious person. We do them quite a bit at night, whether, I know one of our officers, you know, pulls them quite a bit. They'll stop an officer now after ten o'clock, or if they're in a certain area, and they'll ask for their ID and, you know, ask where they're going, see what they're up to. And that's also called out and kept tracked up by the officer calling that out on the radio. Cruiser mileage, that's going to be a monthly mileage, put on the cruisers. Business checks, self-explanatory, it's usually done on foot in the evening time, and vacation home checks are performed throughout the day and evening.
For the public's purpose, that would be someone goes away for three weeks and they give you a call and pass and check?
Week, two weeks, yes. What they can do is they would be able to call the station and speak with admin, and they'll give them their address, whether a light's going to be on, whether it's alarmed, who the key holder is, and, you know, if, gives anything extraordinary that might be happening there that I don't know about. This is all still for the department as a whole, the vehicle stops, and warnings issued, citations issued. Patrol hours, total hours patrolled by vehicle and by foot and patrol. Can also be broken down into focused patrol if we're having, and I haven't quite figured out how we're going to capture that, but we're going to try to capture, break it down, patrol hours into just your uncommitted patrol time, where you're, you're driving around or sitting in a certain area, being visible. Focus would be if we're having a rash of car break-ins, or people leaving their car unlocked, because we've never had an actual break-in in the borough since I've been chief. Usually, they're unlocked, unsecured vehicles. And so we'll patrol that neighborhood, we might get out on foot in a certain area at two o'clock in the morning and focus our time there. Or if we're having, you know, a lot of stop signs being ran, we'll focus our time in that area. So then all, and the beauty of this, everything is actually, you can check on it. I mean, there are not numbers that are pulled out of the air. I have several ways that I discovered that I can actually do it and have redundancy, and one system will cover, like our records management system does a pretty good time, or pretty good job of keeping track of the calls and, you know, how many, how much time is spent with incidents. What it doesn't keep track of is after the incident, when the officer goes to make their arrest paperwork, the charges, fingerprinting, serving, you know, talking on the phone with victims and, and victims' relatives and, you know, the whole nine yards. It's not, we can't capture that with the records management system. However, with another tool that we're going to use, and it's called a patrol log, and that will be for the officers to complete. We've done them before, and, you know, we've done them in certain different ways, and this way is going to be a way where the individual officer, you know, has to document and be accountable for his time, and we'll get to that in a second. Okay, so that, that first page is basically all departmental information, it's all lumped together. If you scroll up a little bit on, or down. Okay, so the next page, this is where we're getting down and breaking it down into officers and showing you and the public what. and breaking it down into officers and showing you and the public what you're actually getting from your department. So the first line is calls. That's an obvious one. I think we're gonna do hours available, switch that over to calls, and then next, so the first line should be hours available. Now that's hours available. Wait, oh, wait, back up once. Okay, we forgot this one. No, one backup one more, Don, please. So it should be hours. Okay, go down, go down, go down. Okay, right there. So we have hour scheduled. That is the amount of hours that you look at Officer Lyons, how many hours he was scheduled on the schedule for that month, okay? The next line is paid time off. The next one would be overtime hours, and the next one would be meetings, and last one would be training. So it'll all, it'll all tie in together once we go to the next, go down a little bit. Okay, so this is the next page. This is where it gets broken down into individual statistics and numbers. So like I said, hours available. Now hours available, I just showed you, I just told you how many hours we were scheduled. Now, hours available will be how much time you have, like, like in the, in the saddle, that you're actually available to do foot patrol and focused patrol hours and the admin hours, anything that has, your investigations, anything that an officer, you know, has to do. That's how many hours you actually have. You're not taking your paid time off, taking your, your training time and your sick time and subtracting that from hours worked to actually have hours available to do the job. And it might be the same as your hours scheduled, or it might be considerably less, depending if the person was on vacation. So that's gonna, that's gonna affect the rest of your numbers as well. So admin hours, I wanna go over that. Admin hours are hours that would be, like, prepping for a range. Okay, you come off of the road, and instead of patrolling, now you have to prep for a range you're having tomorrow. You have to weapons maintenance, equipment maintenance, checking your patrol vehicle, making sure all your equipment's ready and serviceable. It could be, you know, follow-ups and phone calls, or assignments that I'd give somebody. So that would be your admin hours.
Would that also include the paperwork to complete whatever thing you've done out in the field?
So if, if, you know, you had a major incident, so you have a lot of follow-up to do on it, say if it's a aggravated assault felony, so your patrol hours probably gonna be low for that, could be low for that month if it's a really active investigation. Something like that will be annotated on the officer's daily, like, oh, I don't want people to think that I wasn't doing anything, and, you know, but, you know, my vehicle stops are way low, but I had three felonies I investigated that month, too, so. And again, the beauty of it, all this, I can check through the officer's dailies. I can check their dailies to another program that we have and our records management system. So then if you go down to the, the next chart, this is where your, the overtime would be. So and if you go back up to the patrol, the foot patrol, and, you know, the focused patrol, you know, that, that's really getting into the nitty-gritty and splitting peas, as far as I'm concerned. But if there's, if there is, like, time where the vehicle's idling or, or setting in one spot for long periods of time, that could be a, the reason for that should be annotated in the officer's daily is that, you know, I focused on watching pedestrian traffic downtown for two hours, and my vehicle's there for two hours, and I can check that. I know where the vehicles are and how long I'm there for. So the overtime, it's pretty self-explanatory, except for with Officer Lyons and Officer Luce, I'm gonna have a breakdown if it's school-related or if it's borough-related. And obviously, mine will be in comp time. And then I'm gonna add, I didn't, did not put the totals, so if you scroll up a little bit, Don, at the bottom, I'm gonna head another way, back down. I'm gonna have the totals for court, totals for shift, and, you know, it'll total out for the officer and total out for the department for the month, for the reasons. Now, training, you shouldn't see a lot of overtime hours training, very, unless it was done here at the station and, you know, person was held over. As soon as we get some additional part-time help, definitely won't, we'll be able to use part-time to backfill for training, when officers are training or on vacation. And we're doing very minimal overtime for covering that right now. So again...
Sorry, I'm not able to help with this one yet.
This, uh...
I have no idea what's happening. Sorry.
So, and, you know, I, and when I get enough data, I can, we'll be able to do charts, graphs, pie charts, you know, pie graphs, and be able to really, really give a good, a good overall picture of what, you know, the officers are actually doing. You know, if, you know, there's two officers on duty, you might not see an officer for a couple hours. So this, I mean, this is a way to, to answer that question, what were you doing for your 10-hour shift? Why didn't you have, you only had two calls? Like, I can look at the, the incident or the 911 log and see, you know, I only see two incidents for a 10-hour shift and maybe one traffic stop. Well, what did you do for the rest of your 10 hours? Okay. So this is a way that it's documented, it can be, it can be fact-checked, and it should be very accurate. You can account for every single minute. Might be a little, a little grandiose. Try, I think I can do that, but I will do my best to, to get it as close as I can. I think it's a good tool for not only, you know, the borough officials, for me, for the officers themselves. It's just, you know, it's a, it's a good way to be transparent and actually be able to not make these numbers up, pull them out of the air.
If you scroll back a little bit, Sean, it said meetings, and then the next one seemed like it was redundant, up to the top. You had meetings, and then go, go down one, meetings, and then it's...
Admin hours?
Yeah. What's the difference?
So a meeting would be a scheduled meeting, like, that's, would basically be for the SROs and myself, the detective. I do a lot of meetings sometime all day long. And how do I count for that when it's, you know, patrolling, not doing traffic work, and not doing chief stuff, but do meetings, chief's meetings.
So if, I'm just asking questions. If, if an officer's sitting idle, watching somewhere, can they do admin stuff at the same time?
Yes, they can do patrol work. They are, I'm sorry, they can do, if the computers are working, if technology's working, they can be doing their reporting. They can be, you know, making sure their daily activity sheet's caught up. So there's a lot of things you can do when you're idling. Sometimes I've been doing things, you know, work-related, sitting at a traffic zone, a car was flying by, and I didn't get a chance to clock it, but, you know, Joe Public sees that. He says, why aren't you going after him? You sleeping?
I got it.
I was not focused on that. So if there's anything that you, as a group or an individual, would like to see, some data captured that, that's not listed, contact me, let me know. This is very easy to change. So, any further, I'm pretty open to ideas, and there's all different ways to skin a cap, so.
So this is taking the place of your report that you would give us of...
Yes, this is the report like I gave you tonight.
That was sometimes caught my eye, members were confused.
Yeah, well, I did do...
This is a lot.
What I would have to do is like...
Is this time-consuming for you to handle all this?
Uh, I think it's, the first couple times is gonna be, like, if I keep on it, and, so I take the officer's dailies, and if my admin and I can keep on it daily, it won't be, you know, it'll take time, but it won't be, it's not something I could put together the day before a council meeting, that's for sure.
Yeah, that's a lot. So it's a lot of information to do. I mean, all right. See how it goes.
You know, it's...
We, we just, we just want you to understand what your officers are doing and report to us that everything's good.
Well, that's how I'm gonna, that's how I'm gonna do it.
Okay. We don't need to actually have to spend hours and hours and hours preparing to, to report to us.
But it's not just for you. It's, it's for me as well.
Well, that's good. That's helping you. Like, I don't believe anyone here needs to see every waking moment of every...
Right. That's not gonna happen. No.
Good.
And I don't have the officer's sick time.
I like the idea of you improving your report and your presentation to us. We enjoy having it, but we don't wanna micromanage your...
Right. Neither do I wanna micromanage my police department.
We want you to run it.
Right, yeah. It's being ran.
Tell them how good it's being run.
But this is, you know, this is the transparency of the new community policing, you know, five pillars of policing that have been implemented nationwide.
But you're just taking the same stats that you used to put on your old report, and you're kinda putting it in something that's more...
Meaningful.
Yeah, and easy to understand for, for all of us, I guess.
Right, well, no, I mean, it adds an element of accountability in a way.
Yeah. I see that, 'cause you have the officers listed.
Yeah.
I never saw that before.
Yeah.
Would there be a way to pull the data from your report directly into your sheet so that you don't have to manually do it? Is there a way to automate that, or...
We're planning that right now. Now, there is a time, I get a report, I can make a report from the incident, or our records management system. It's a detailed minute log. I mean, it will tell you exactly how many minutes an incident took, but not, you know, how many hours you're on foot patrol.
I just didn't know if your program would be compatible, say, with Microsoft Excel, where you could, like, extract that data.
Hopefully, we can, hopefully someday we'll get to that. We're working towards that, yeah.
Make it easier.
So without any, or do anything?
Chief, if you do it this way, you're changing things around, would it make more sense to have that report on the first meeting of the month from the month before?
I don't see why.
Okay.
I don't see why.
Okay. I just wonder if you're collecting month by month.
Right.
Which I'm doing right now. It's month to month as well.
I mean, Lori does what you're saying, at least for the authority, because, I mean, it's an early meeting of the month, you know, we could stagger it, even though it's the second meeting's the report meeting. We could be, we could be lagging a month if that helps.
Yeah, sometimes, like just last report, I was, there was no way I could get the monthly report done. Things happen that I don't have control over, and, you know, this report takes me about three and a half hours to do, so sometimes I can do it, I'd do it a couple weeks out, a couple days prior, but sometimes a day up, so.
We can look at scheduling, just, you know, make it work, make it workable.
I mean, this report could be done in the first, the first meeting, if it's, if it's worth it, if it's worth the time.
If it's, if we agree to a lag a month, we could do it that way. But generally, the second meeting of the month is the report meeting.
That gives me time to...
For the previous month, sure.
First Monday sometimes is the first of the month.
You let us know, well, Chief, you let us know which way works better.
If it lags a month, it's okay, but still...
No? The way it is now.
We can comprehend all that goes on in there. Let us know which works better, and we appreciate you trying to make it a little bit more easily to understand. But, but not that it overburdens you. The guy's got enough going on.
Right.
How's the understaffed and fighting the overtime battle going?
Well, no, it's not too bad. The SROs are back.
Oh, you got two guys back.
I love June.
I agree, Mr. Renee. Good suggestion, Randy, but I want it to work for you.
Yeah. This works.
Only 'cause we don't know what's going, and all the, geez, I mean...
Yeah.
This, you know, it might...
If you see a...
The first couple of times is gonna, you know, is gonna be a little bit difficult, but it'll, it'll work itself out.
It's a problem for you.
We'll get it done.
Hey, why don't we have you stand there, but only for a few minutes, 'cause I don't want to run late. Last meeting, we had someone talking about false alarms, remember?
Yes.
Now, obviously, there's a crime code section already built into our laws that do exactly what he was presenting. You don't get that many, do you? Do you know?
No, our false alarms are, are usually a bat flying around in the museum.
Well, yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, so there's a crime code section, seventy, whatever, eleven. More than three, we would send them a letter saying, hey, you had three. One more, it's gonna cost you.
Right.
You, you don't even, that's not...
I've never, we've never used that section. Never had to use it.
It's there.
Yeah, that's one of those...
But I mean, you could just keep a book, and, you know, if the museum gets four alarms a month...
We don't have an issue. I don't, I don't have to recall ever even charging anybody.
Good. No. It was very rare for us, too, but we have a big area.
Right.
And a lot of alarms.
Certain areas where there's a lot of industry, like, you know, Ferguson Township on Science Park Road, when you have a bad storm, you're...
But it's not an issue of you. Your officers are not.
No.
I mean, good lord, we're going to have a storm.
Okay, good.
Big spring reserves, I guess, false alarms for, for one year.
There was an issue out there.
Well, and it happens. If it happens...
That sucks.
The big spring didn't install it. Some company installed it.
Balloons, jacked up.
Healing balloon, yeah, a party.
They would've sat them off.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, let's move on.
All right.
Side note, I think we have a local ordinance, too, because years ago...
Thanks, Rob.
Some of the banks, some of the banks would get close to the three in a period
of time. I think it was six months or something like that. We haven't used it for a long time. So the next item is this, South Potter Street safety concerns. I did put a handout together, left it at your seat. I apologize for not sending it out. I was just gonna put some notes together, and then I started looking. I thought, well, it'd just be easy to put it in a memo format and do some attachments.
May I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
We received a letter from a resident in regard to the safety issues on Potter Street.
Correct.
Little history. And then Mr. Stewart put together this addition of the safety improvements that we've done so far. He's, I wanted the public to know...
Sure.
...why we started to relook at this.
Yeah, we, we received that email complaint. It was forwarded to us from some council members on May 12th, and I attached it to this memo. It's concerns about speeding. So I just mentioned here, as most of you know, or all of you know, as elected officials, we cannot use radars for a local police department. It's not permitted in Pennsylvania. The area of South Potter Street is not conducive to setting up the timing devices due to inadequate psych distance. And literally, for a long time, this has been a concern of that area, South Potter Street, the length of it, but particularly around the side of the street. So in 2022, the borough started looking at, you know, how to improve the crosswalk area around the side of the street. A series of meetings took place with the side of the street operator, the property owners, and then we, the borough, asked our PennDOT, well, a couple of things we did. We asked the PennDOT LTAP rep, is a local, local technical assistance program rep for PennDOT that helps municipalities. We had that person come in, review South Potter Street. The findings are here. I'm gonna summarize them, but his actual email's attached as well. We also had recently obtained a digital speed sign that captures the speed of vehicles, the number of vehicles, and maybe some other data. That was placed in that area. Also, in the fall of 2022, so we have that information. But to summarize what, what the LTAP person, his name's Mark Wood, came up with, there's a number of suggestions. One was yellow-green double-up pedestrian signs on both sides of the side of the street. That, as I have noted here, that work has been done. He, and you can see his actual email wording. He at first really did not recommend a mid-block crosswalk. They're generally not permitted or not recommended, but he said if you do, you know, decide to do a crosswalk, he would recommend that it be a raised crosswalk, similar to what is down by the train station. Make sure it's ADA... Make sure it's ADA compliant. It would take out some parking spaces because of the configuration. We'd have to install some delineators to keep people on the road, not trying to go around the, the raised crosswalk, because there's no separation between the parking lot and the road. It's really one and the same practically. The site distance was mentioned about the yellow building. This is the building between the road and the railroad tracks. It's some type of storage-related railroad building. It is historical by age, but not really by use or anything. But, you know, Mark Wood pointed it out, that unless the building comes down, the site distance was uncorrectable. Of course, he didn't say about taking the building down at this point, I'm going to get to that in a moment. He talks about either speed bumps or what he calls, he also referenced what's called a speed table or a speed cushion. And again, he references what's down by the train station. You know, a typical speed bump is just a little, like a curve. The more sloped up, flat, and sloped back down, speed-reducing type of thing, is a speed table or speed cushion. So, he references that a few times in his email. And recommends, you know, that could be done on South Potter Street, either on the approach to the side area, both sides of the side area. Now, the person that wrote the email was not only concerned about that area, but further out to the end of the, where the stop sign is, where Ruppsburg and Hillary and Potter Street meet. And I'll mention that now, but that, some of that area is in Spring Township. We, the borough, in, in processing this, decided to try to work something out with the property owner of the yellow building. You know, and then, actually, I believe it was either late 2022, early 2023, there was another accident there. And we thought, well, maybe this is a good time to approach the property owner about a proposal, in working out something, an agreement where we would help take down that building, so that the visibility, site distance goes away. We have circulated an agreement. We're waiting for the property owners to come back, either the counter offer or some comments, but right now, we're, it's, we're waiting on the property owners. The speed bumps, that was, let me, let me say this, in the email, there's a number of concerns mentioned. One was speeding. I believe I've touched on reasons why it's difficult to enforce speeding. Not that there can't be things done to reduce speeding, but we're looking at, we've placed the yellow signs, that's already been done. We could, we're trying to take down the building, and then some of the other concerns were, the stop signs at Ruppsburg, Hillary, Potter, could, I was just looking at my notes here, those are in Spring Township. Could we, could we do things to help make them more visible, including a larger stop ahead sign, maybe adding a bus stop ahead sign, or children at play sign? I, I just noted that we could go back to our LTAP representative and check into this and see what advice is recommended for those signs. There's a question about maintaining vegetation by the borough, and I note that the property owners are responsible for maintaining vegetation on the borough, not to say we can't notify people, but we've been out there, the signs are visible, there is a little bit of a turn, it is a little bit awkward to see the signs, but if, again, if you're driving at a normal speed, it's an approachable intersection, although we can look at getting some advice to see what can be done with signs. Lastly, for nearly, I'll say eight months or so, last fall for sure, we started a discussion with CETA-COG, Joint Rail Authority, about acquiring the railroad spur that runs alongside Potter Street, at least out to the Center Gas and Oil and J.J. Powell area. We were fairly optimistic we can get that, but it's not going to be for free. They, they want a fee for the steel that's in the railroad bed, and there are some other contingencies with the local historical railroad. But, well, we, we will be discussing that with council in the very near future. But that's kind of a summary of what I put together here. I put a couple, put, again, the copy of the email that came in, it was forwarded to us, a copy of Mark Wood's comments, word for word, through his email, a couple photographs of the yellow building, both kind of in the northbound, southbound direction. And lastly, there's a color photograph from the county's GIS system, shows a green line. That green line is the municipal line boundary, and you can see it, it goes really right through the intersection of Hillary, Ruppsburg, and Potter Streets. So, we, and I've been through the intersection, you know, looking at this, this, all, all three stop signs are, I think, very visible. They have their red reflective added material on the post. I mean, there's an attempt to make them more visible, at least at this point, but again, we'll go back and see if there's more we can do. So, I wanted to bring it up, just refresh your memory, this is not forgotten. It's not, you know, as mentioned in, in the email, it's the end of the borough or near the borough line. A lot of effort's been in to trying to address some of these issues. Unfortunately, Potter Street's a very old street in the borough and very narrow. There, there was a recommendation made from Mark Wood about considering a one-way pattern, and I mentioned that in here. You know, that, that caused complications of its own, because we have residents on one side and some industrial area on the other side. Of course, you're going to have trucks, you're going to have cars trying to get in and get out. I, you know, most residents don't like that kind of a change, but it was a recommendation from the PennDOT person.
Put a lot of pressure on Hillary's street.
Yes, people would go up through Half Moon Hill, they'd find a way around. So, that, typically, that's what happens, even with speed bumps. People find the next road over or something and try to find a way not to slow down, but to go around them, unfortunately. So, I can answer questions, but I wanted to get, put this summary together and give you an overview of it.
Chief Weaver, would you come? Thanks.
First and foremost, that street is not conducive for a 25 nine-hour speed limit. It's 25, traveling 25 on, on Ruppsburg Road would seem like you're at the Daytona 500. Now, I didn't, I wasn't CC'd on this or on this, the original complaint, I just found out about it last week or about two weeks ago, Ralph told me about it. You know, and of course, when I read it, it did mention that they reached out to the police department. However, I punched the, the individual's name in, and there was no complaints involving any kind of traffic complaints or none at all about the speeding on, from that individual to the department. I don't remember speaking with her on the phone or having any conversation with, with the person, but I was hoping that I would, at least been, would have been CC'd on this so I would have known about it, and I could have provided a lot more information as well. Sitting with one of my officers, they were actually sitting out there three weeks ago by J.J. Powell, and there was no way, he said, to safely do it. But we can, I would like to reach out to the complaint, and if anyone from council would like to go, we could set the NRAD system up, and we could sit 20 yards away and, and look at the speed and, and the perceived speed and the actual speed. Now, Pennsylvania Title 75 says that we cannot, as municipal officers, cite anybody for going, we have to give a 10 mile an hour cushion, basically, unless there are conditions, extraordinary conditions present, that we can say that's, you know, too fast for conditions. It would be like, the conditions would have to be, like, there's a bunch of kids playing on the roadway, and, you know, you should, you wouldn't be able to stop, I'd be able to articulate that, that person wouldn't be able to stop their car in a safe manner before they, you know, have an accident. So, that would be my suggestion to anyone who actually, you know, would like to, has a speeding issue in front of their house, I'd like to offer, we can set that up, and we'll sit with you and, you know, show you what, what the speeds actually are and the perception. You know, some might be spot on, some might be a little, what I'm saying at that, at that, on that road, that's a road where, if you're traveling 25, it's way too fast and it seems like you're going 40 to observer. So, just wanted to add that.
Okay.
I'd like to add a couple of things. Jenny Lynn Schuster is basically principal investigator for a grant that come from DCED that's called Safe Walks to Parks. They're holding, and Sean, this might be something you might be interested in attending. I believe the meeting is the afternoon of July 17th. It's not the 17th, it's the 18th. The reason I don't know is because I know I won't be here, because that's the day I'm leaving for Italy. But they're looking to have community input, so I think police, some council members, the woman who has made this complaint, she's already been notified about this meeting. And I think having this information that you've put together would be helpful, because what the plan is, is to have, have this community input, and then, working together, they're going to craft a plan to make this particular road, which is what they're focusing on first, safer for the community.
So, what's the location of that meeting?
It will be on Potter, South Potter Street.
On that street?
Or the meeting day?
I believe it's on South Potter Street. Jenny Lynn Schuster can tell you exactly where they're going to be meeting. I think it's like 2:00 in the afternoon, but I will, I already want to.
We can verify that and get it up, get that information out and post it on our website.
Yeah.
The community meeting is the 18th at the Gilmour.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
I said I was naming, so I didn't put that in my head.
Okay. Okay, any other comments? We're running short on time. I have 7:31, so we're going to have to save the armory building improvements update for next quarter. So, I'd like to return this meeting. Hit the doorbell now.
to order. At first, we'd like to have the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
My pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bernier.
Here.
Mr. Brackville.
Here.
Ms. Clayton.
Here.
Ms. Stan.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. McKean.
Here.
Ms. Purnell.
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Here.
Ms. Tostie Vacy.
I'm here.
And Mayor Johnson is excused.
Okay, thank you, Ralph. Additions to the council meeting agenda. In accordance with Act 65, if a matter is not on the agenda, council may take official action on it with the following exceptions. Council can act on matters relating to potential or real emergencies. Council may add a matter of agency business to its agenda through a majority vote. The council must state why the action is, item is being added to the agenda. Council may vote to add an action item or items to the agenda at this time. Any recommendations?
I have three.
Three? Holy gosh, that's good. Okay.
Uh, we need to add, uh, Barbara Dan's PSAB resolution report, because the thing says there's no report in here.
Is it an action item?
No, it's not an ac-
You, you, we can, we're only talking about adding action items.
Okay, there's, uh, under the Trinity United Methodist Church request, uh, there's a correction that needs to change the waiver fee from Governor's Park to Tallyrand Park since it's Tallyrand Park with events being held. And we need to add a motion to conditionally approve the hanging of a banner on the veteran's bidge, conditional on filling out the banner application from August 27th.
Let me back up a minute. I'm sorry, Joanne. Uh, okay, first of all, we have the request from the church. I'm looking for that.
That's under, uh, new business.
New business. And other council, I had everything organized here until you added this. Okay. New business?
Yeah, I believe it's-
Okay.
So, there's, uh, there's an error in where the, uh, waiver fee is. It's not Governor's Park, it's Tallyrand Park.
Trinity United Methodist Church, uh, Tallyrand Park to waive the Governor's Park ball field fee.
It's that, it should be Tallyrand Park.
Okay.
Okay.
What's the date for this?
Uh, the date is September 10th.
The second part of that is you need to add a motion to conditionally approve the hanging of a banner on the veteran's bidge, conditional on filling out the banner application from August 27th through September 10th. The request is in the letter-
Yes, yes, it's in there.
But it's not on the action part.
So, again, uh, I gotta call a point of order. It's not our job to put these applications together. If something comes in and it's not right, it should go back to the people who are, you know, asking for it. They're playing time, it doesn't come up till September. I really don't see as much time as this has taken just to explain what's going on, go back and do it again later on at the meeting.
I agree with you, but it's simplistic.
That's why we did this, that's why we did it this way with these permits, so.
And, and then the final one is on the parking ordinance. I think before we actually have a motion to advertise, I think we need to have motions to amend the proposed parking ordinance before voting on a motion to advertise, because I saw several items that were missed in, uh, when I reviewed the proposed ordinance.
You wanna add some stuff to that?
There are changes in, that were-
That you noted.
Yeah, a whole bunch of them.
Yeah.
Either that or we postpone the advertising until, uh, we get, get a clean ordinance. I don't care which order we do, but it's not ready to go, in my opinion, ready to go for advertising.
Is this the appropriate time for this discussion?
No.
I'm, I'm, I'm just, the reason I'm asking, Joanne, is, um, I was going to ask if we can conditionally approve it, but you're saying to delay the advertisement until the wording, wording is correct? I was going to ask the question, has the solicitor looked over? Is that the normal procedure?
No, not always. If, if requested, we'll do it. And, uh, we, we, you can make less than substantial changes even after the ordinance is-
You're right. Oh, that's right, after it's advertised, yeah.
To the night of action, you can still make less than substantial-
Yeah. Are they significant enough that you feel-
Some of them are, some of them are not.
But those changes had to be approved by council, that you're suggesting?
Yeah.
And in the meantime, oh, go ahead.
So, but anyway, uh, based on your question that this is not the proper time, we need to do this when we get to that, I, that's what I'm requesting to do when we get down to that section.
Okay. Yeah, so if we just allow an amendment, or amendments to be considered, uh, you know, as part of the action this evening, maybe we can take five minutes and do that, then continue on with advertisement and so on.
Okay. So, we, we do need to vote to add it as an action item?
Yes.
The possible amendments, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Does that answer your question?
Not really, because it's two different applications that we're talking about. So, for the one that, the first one, I don't think, I think it needs to go back, let them fix it and then get it back to us, because they have, like, again, until September 10th, I believe it is. I don't see any other application.
Okay. So, do you, did you make the motion?
Yes, I made the motion.
Did somebody second that? Motion of Joanne's?
The three items, or two items. You said the first one doesn't count.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not an action.
Is there a second to Joanne's?
I'll second it.
Okay. I guess we have to do a roll call vote.
Deb Clayton.
Deb Clayton, yes.
Seconded the motion.
Yes.
What are we talking about?
Okay, so, Joanne is, has some addendums. Tonight on our agenda, is, uh, I don't, before we vote, I need to explain this. Uh, and, Joanne, if I've missed something, please jump in and explain. There's an action item on the, uh, agenda tonight to approve and advertise the changes in our parking ordinance.
I'm going back to what Randy asked about, the hanging of a banner and the first thing we were talking about.
Okay, the hanging of the banner is-
Not even a part of the motion.
Yeah.
All we're talking about is clarifying the Trinity Methodist, or the Trinity United Methodist Church issue and the parking, uh, ordinance. That's the only two things we're talking about.
And he was asking about the banner.
The banner's part of the Trinity.
Yeah. And the banner question, Randy said, go ahead and explain what you're asking.
He said that the applications-
Doesn't have the hanging of the banner.
He said that the applications shouldn't come from council if they're incorrect, which I'm sure all of us would agree with, because we don't wanna spend time pointing out what the people from the church incorrectly wrote-
Right.
-on their application to hang a banner for a church organization thing in our borough, which we're gonna approve anyway.
That's correct. Most likely, yes.
It's not till September, if I heard Mr. Brackville correctly. So, this isn't something that we need to spend time picking apart at tonight's meeting. Like, send it back.
Or, or we can approve.
Whatever the rules are to govern hanging of a banner, I, I say we just-
Maybe to make this a little bit easier.
Make it simpler, it's more difficult and time consuming.
Maybe to make this a little bit easier. Go ahead and, and have this discussion when we get down there and we can make a motion that we can approve everything else except the banner.
That'd be great.
And then we can move on from there.
Yeah, okay. Sounds like a plan.
Let's move along.
Okay. So, the other, did you have, did you have the other question about the parking additions?
No.
We, we were slated, we were going to approve the new regulations, for lack of a better term.
But isn't that just a motion to approve? We will have the discussion during that time, correct?
Right.
But she wants to add this to the action item to change-
Right. The action item currently says we're only voting to advertise. I'm saying we need, uh, an additional motion before we do that to make changes to what's in the proposed ordinance.
I guess I assume that that could be part of that discussion, so maybe that's-
Well, well, to have that discussion, we have to approve it to add it to the agenda. That's, that's what she, she's making a change.
Okay, okay.
That's, that's going to need an approval. Okay.
Well, we could just move along with what's on the agenda already, also.
We could, we could approve it as it's written. That is correct, yes. But Joanne has asked to add this to the agenda as an action item. It was seconded by Deb Clayton. So, now we have a vote that says whether we're going to allow this to be added or not. If you vote no, that means you don't want to add this to, as an action item to tonight's agenda meeting. It still stays the same. We still can take a vote and advertise it. And what Mr. Stewart was saying was, if, if it needs to be added and it's not a drastic change, we can do that without having to re-advertise it and pay the expense. And I, I don't know if you think, or Mr. Stewart thinks, that it's a, a major item that would categorize it as a new, a new advertisement. Okay? Each, when we approve this, we have to publish it. Okay?
I understand. I'm, I'm ready to vote. You don't have to continue for my sake. If everybody else understands it, it's fine.
Is everybody clear on-
I'm gonna say, as under this, it says council can act on matters relating to potential or real emergencies, and I'm not seeing a potential to real emergency from either one of these.
Okay. Good points.
Well, it also says that council may, uh, council may add a matter of agency business to its agenda through a majority vote.
Yep.
The legislators give you a, a, a way to do, add an item, but it's by majority vote.
Right. Okay. So, uh, we ready to vote. Any more discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bernier?
No.
Uh, Mr. Brackville?
No.
Ms. Clayton?
No.
Ms. Stan?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Ms. McKean?
Um, no.
Ms. Purnell?
No.
Ms. Sedgwick?
No.
Ms. Tostie Vacy?
Yes.
Okay. Motion did not carry. Oh, now, where are we at here? Additions. Public comment. Uh, this is the time during the meeting, uh, the public, uh, comment period is for oral comments regarding any action items listed on this meeting agenda or any comments in general. There's no deliberation will be entered into by council at this time. Sign in, uh, come to the podium at the appropriate time, state your name and address and which item you are speaking about. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any speaker? Please come forward. Have a name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Kevin Abbott. I live at 401 East Bishop Street and, uh-
Hi, Kevin.
Hi. Um, so I just wanted to, as somebody who's been involved in the, um, environmental committee, I just wanted to introduce myself, um, as, uh, somebody who's been donating their time to be involved in that. And, uh, my wife and I, we lived in Bellefonte for 17 years. We have a business called Jibigo Studio. We employ 10 people. We send earrings to all, all over the country wholesale. Um, so, I believe global warming is a threat and that's my primary motivation for being involved in the, on the committee. Um, but I also feel that most of the ideas and the, um, the actions proposed or that are being worked on by that effort is, um, beneficial economically and socially and that there's a lot of other benefits as well. Um, I just wanted to introduce myself as, put a face on, like, a name that you might have seen in, in that committee, so.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there others who would like to comment? Yes, Nancy. Welcome, Nancy.
Hi, hi, everybody. Um, Nancy Perkins, Curtin Street, Bellefonte. Just wanted to thank council for conducting the survey, the environmental plan and the survey, because data, as we heard from the chief, is important to be able to make decisions. So, thank you. And thank specifically Joanne for championing it and Deb for, and I was late because I was at a climate, uh, lecture, so.
You're right on time.
I'm sorry I missed all the information. I'll get it later.
Thank you, Nancy. Any others? Okay, we'll move on to, uh, item six, communications. Mr. Stewart?
First one is a resignation letter from our Bellefonte Fire Chief, Gary Lor. We have stated that there's no action at this time for council. I believe the fire executive board is handling everything.
Yeah, we have, uh, notified folks of the resignation and the, uh, I had, let's just set up a, an area back here. If somebody wants to drop off their resume, they can email us when the end of day was, the meeting will probably be out Thursday night and then we'll come back to council and we'll have a decision then.
Okay.
And just for clarification, Gary is going to stay on till the 5th, until the next borough meeting, so that if a new chief is sworn in that night, there'll be, you know, the transition will be more smooth. So, he-
Good.
He, uh, he offered to stay on an additional five days from his resignation letter.
Thank you. Next item is Center County Recycling Refuge Authority has started a monthly newsletter. It's in your information as a, it's informational, no action requested. Next, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I wanted to add to, to that report. Uh, Deb talked to the recycling center last week. Um, they currently have a, we had talked previous about doing a food waste program here in Bellefonte, um, for composting. The recycling center has already set up a food waste program, uh, including meat product composting with, they currently have drop-off sites in Benner College, Ferguson, Harris, and townships that remain open through October. Basically, they're, that, uh, program is taking vegetables, fruits, meat, fish bones, dairy grains, breads, pasta, but, uh, obviously not plastics, produce stickers, twist pies, animal or human waste. Um, it would, I would be interested, and we'll probably talk about this with the EAB before we do it, but I would like to see possibly having a drop-off site here in Bellefonte as well.
I quickly looked at the survey and it was the least favorable one on the survey that I just read. It was like 90% opposed. Well, that, that's just-
Yeah, I was gonna say, but there, we do, but what I'm saying is that that is already there, so we don't have to go put in, basically, I'm saying we don't have to upgrade our mustard lane composting to have this available, because it's already available here in the county.
Anything else?
Okay.
Will we go to the cat?
Yes, next item is an announcement from CATA, the, the bus operations company here in our area. They're proposing to remove the XB route which serves Bellefonte. It's kind of what they call the fixed bus route. They're taking public comments in a public hearing on Wednesday, June 28th, 4:30 to 6:30 here in this room, the borough council room for Bellefonte Borough. And they also, I know, I saw on the notice, they'll take comments prior to the public meeting via email, probably letters as well. But if someone wants to come in in person, it would be on the June 28th between 4:30 and 6:30. That's all we have under written additions.
And, yeah, I have a comment. And it is related to the survey this time.
I beg your pardon?
Um, since Cattigo had, um, has always linked the fixed route service, uh, will the elimination of the fixed, how will that elimination, the fixed route service affect Cattigo? I think that's a question we need to raise on June 28th. The other thing is that the sustainability in the survey indicates that a third of the residents are interested in local public transportation. I agree, that's not a, a great amount. However, 60% of the commercial and business owners are interested in expanding Cattigo with 50% disiring a downtown Catta-based trolley loop. And they also talked about, uh, additional bike racks in downtown for economic development purposes. So, I think those are things we can mention at the June 28th meeting.
Uh, I, I think you could email that to Mr. Stewart or anybody.
Oh, yeah, or directly to CATA.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With your comments. Great. Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by single, a single motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of council request specific, specific items to be removed for separate action. So, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 consent agenda items.
Can I make that motion, Brackville?
I'll second.
You can choose.
Dan.
I heard Bernier.
Barb Dan, yes.
Okay.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr.-
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Stan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tostie Vacy?
Yes.
Okay. Reports. The mayor is not here tonight. Sean, do you have something?
Captain, uh, the same way having moved to the court.
Looked good to me.
Okay, the, the mayor, uh, I think he spoke about it at the last meeting. We had a cookout in May downtown and I wanted to give, uh, thanks to Alyssa and Detective Whitmer for also helping the, uh, cooking. I cook the hot dogs. Burn a lot of hair.
Okay, will Officer Nyman be getting that award here?
That will be, no, that will be, well, I'll be recognizing her here for an award, but the award that I, I spoke about in the police report-
The DA's good.
-will be at the courthouse.
Okay.
And I think Ralph was CC'd on that as well.
I think it's in our packet.
It's pretty good on, uh-
Like, July 18th or something?
Yes. So, everyone's welcome to attend.
Yeah. We'll, we'll make sure it's well-known here after that, at some point. Yeah. Any other questions for Chief Weaver? Thanks, Chief. Thank you very much. Um, Office of Community Action, OCA. You all saw the memo in your packet, um, and the Harb has recommended for approval the following projects. Uh, specific motions are stated in the OC, OCA memo and that you've all reviewed. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve 140 West High Street slash 110 South Spring Street. It's a retaining wall. 214 North Allegheny Street, mural landscape, and 420 East Lynn Street replace wood siding. Do I have a motion and a second for that?
Some of.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Cat?
That was Joanne and Cat.
Discussion.
Good. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Stan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
And Ms. Tostie Vacy?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And you all see the administrative approvals, which is great. Thanks for going, that borough staff. Uh, let's go to liaison. Oh, there's my, I just had that in case I needed to discuss that. Uh, any questions on the reports in your packet? Okay, moving on to current and old business. First item is CD BG Project 2023 Selection. A motion and a second to approve the Tallyrand Park Suspension Bidge Rehabilitation. Is that-
That's it.
It?
Some of.
Thank you, Joanne.
I'll second it, Clayton.
Thank you, Deb. Discussion. Roll call vote, Mr.-
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Stan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tostie Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you. Special event application. I'm looking for a motion and a second to allow staff to administratively handle special event applications, including discretion on fee waiver requests.
Can I make that motion, Brackville?
Thank you, Randy.
I'll second.
Thank you, Barb. Discussion.
I'm going to vote no.
Okay.
Because I believe that there have been a few instances in which these waivers have not been looked into completely and we've had, passed them where, um, the, a, either a for-profit or an out-of-town nonprofit has gotten the waivers and I want our policy to be consistent.
Okay. Other discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Stan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tostie Vacy?
No.
Okay, next item.
Two names, one no?
One. Uh, the next item is update to the Bellefonte Borough Fee Schedule, RV Parking Permit. I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the addition of the RV Parking Permit Fee to the Bellefonte Borough Fee Schedule as amended. Is there a motion from this council?
RV, like, asset and recreational vehicle?
You're, you're legal.
Yes?
Is that-
This is on the street.
Yeah, yeah, you're not on the street.
No, no, I'm just saying, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Of course I'm not on the street. Who would park their RV on the street?
Well, that's a good ques- some people do. Obviously, that's why we have to amend the, uh, they're only good for a few days, so.
Some of.
Thank you, Barb. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Deb. Barb Dan. Discussion.
Okay.
Yes, yes, Karen.
I have, I have, do not believe that this is ready for advertisement. Um, there are, when I reviewed it, there were proposed multiple subs- there needs to be places where it says, as outlined in the borough's patro fee, wherever there are actual fines listed. There are sections that have some location errors. Uh, there-
Wait, are you talking about the fee schedule?
Yes.
This is a different-
Oh, 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 okay.
There is, there is a little bit of an issue. Our chairman skipped the parking ordinance. But anyway, we're gonna-
I'm sorry, I reject it. We already voted on that. It's my fault, not yours.
But anyway, he threw, he threw, threw you a wrench.
Yeah, I skipped it just to see if you paid attention. And you weren't. Okay. Right?
Yeah.
Okay. So the next, the next action item, we can have that discussion, Joanne. Could I have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Holdman? For the update of the R V parking.
Yep, Mr. Benir.
By resolution, no advertisement.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean. Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
So we're doing the, make sure, we're doing the fee schedule, R V.
Yep, 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 that's the one I read and that was, I had the motion and seconded, yep.
Okay.
See, you need to pay attention now. Did you vote yesterday and I'm sorry?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. Moving on.
Then we can go back to the other one.
Okay. Moving on to the parking ordinance draft, okay? Comments, feedback from council. Motion and a second to approve advertisement of the amended action with a date of July fifth of twenty twenty-three for that action. So that's, that's the one.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Deb.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Barb. Discussion.
As I started to say, there's multiple substitutions and this might be minor.
Sure, sure.
Where, wherever there's a fee, it needs to be substituted as outlined in the Borough Fee Schedule. There's a cause of least fifteen or sixteen different places.
Yes.
There are common, there are places where there's some location errors, where, for example, roads are parallel to each other and don't intersect each other. And in the ordinance, it says they intersect. There, there's a section in there that pedicycles that doesn't have any definitions and I think it's a decent section, but we need to define what a pedicycle is. There's, and let me look at this real quick. There's a section on fines and when we remove the fines, we need to be clear on what the fines are. Let me see if I can find that. It's section where they have a first fence, second fence, and third fence and then they're, and those values are set at one level and then immediately below it, there's a higher set of fees. And I can't tell from this whether this is just an error in the way it's set up or if there's truly a difference in fees for these particular types of violations versus a general set of violations. That needs to be reviewed. There's also a sentence in there about, about you can't have public events on public, on governmental property. And I believe the way it's written, we would need to have a lawyer review it, who has a knowledge of constitutional law because that, the way it's written, it looks like it would be prohibiting anybody who wants to protest something that, that they have a First Amendment right to protest decisions of the council. And, and then there's the section on E V parking in which there are three different versions. We only need one of them because if you have all three of them, it's redundant.
Yes.
So there's just multiple different things and I do not think it's ready to actually move forward.
I, I wanted, you know, we put it on the agenda. We weren't sure if it's going to be ready. I only received a handful of comments and Joanne has some very valid points that need to be looked at. It probably would be best if I took comments for another couple of weeks till the next meeting. We held off action from tonight. Get some answers and get you an updated draft for the next meeting and then you can consider, you know, two weeks later about advertising and all of that.
Can we make a motion to table?
I think, yes.
I'll make that motion, Brackville.
And I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion on the tabled item? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Benir.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. The last item, I'll read it, Plan Traffic Signal at Parkview and Zion, maybe you could go ahead and make, no, I'm happy to do it, but you had, you had the communication.
Well, there's an item on the agenda here. We're trying to get the word out. We're looking for feedback on safety issues related to the Parkview and Zion Road intersection where the, we are planning to install a traffic light, where we have hired a consultant that is acting as our engineer. That engineer is working with Penn Dot to try to find some grant funding, which we typically do look for. And anyway, there's a conversation about the safety issues. Even though the light's warranted, the crash history of that intersection is very, very low. So they, they, someone suggested about testimonial statements that would reflect a broader view of safety issues, again, at Parkview and Zion Roads. So if you have, if you're a resident or nearby or person or pass through that intersection on a regular basis and like to share, maybe a near miss or something like that, I would welcome your comments. They can be sent to our Borough email address, which is B O R O at Bellefonte PA dot gov. We'll take them, you know, we'll take them other ways by letter, but it's something we're gonna copy and send it to Penn Dot, so we need something in writing as a preferred method.
I would, I would add to Mr. Stewart's comment that you can contact any council member with that information and we will bring that forward to Mr. Stewart. The other, I just want to put it in layman's terms. The more support we have for safety at the intersection, the more likely we will be to get grant funding. So we'll score higher when we make the application. As Mr. Stewart said, with the low, low accident rate, it doesn't look as important to fund that project than it would be to a high, highly, a lot of accidents intersection. So the more information we have to support the dangerous intersection, the higher we'll score with the grant, the grantees. Any other comments? So send in any, anything you can.
Yes.
All right. And the last thing, you want to make that announcement for the vacancy?
Sure, you know, for citizens and people who follow our meetings, we have a current vacancy in our nuisance code administrator position. That's a person who goes around the community looking for high grass situations or trashcans left out beyond the ordinance specified times. Anyway, we have a new person. We did, did some interviews and we're fortunate that we have, we had some good interviews and we have a person starting on Monday, July third. They'll be here for a few hours and sort of get some training and start to learn the lay of the land. We're, we're excited to bring this person on board and as always, until then, you are, anyone is welcome to email us again at our Borough email address concerning any of these nuisance violations at Borough, which is B O R O at Bellefonte PA dot gov. Thank you.
And that email address is on our website.
Yes.
Anytime, twenty-four hours a day. And then the last item. It's just contact the Borough. Yeah, you already said that.
Yes, yes.
Okay. New business. Dylan Kruenig. Hope I said that right.
You did.
Charity Memorial Baseball Tournament, August twelfth and the thirteenth. Motion and a second to approve the Kruenig Charity Memorial Baseball Tournament on August twelfth and thirteenth of twenty twenty-three. This, and that's, so let's do the first motion and then I'll read the second one.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Deb.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Barb. Discussion. To approve the date. Roll call vote, Mr. Holdman.
Mr. Benir.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean. Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Okay, Charity Memorial Baseball Tournament, the same tournament. Looking for a motion and a second to waive the Governor's Park Baseball Field Fee. This was submitted by our Mayor Johnson, the request to waive the fee. You've all seen the request in your packet, so I'm looking for a motion and a second on this.
Some of.
Thanks, Barb. Thank you, Deb. Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Benir.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
And Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Okay. Trinity United Methodist Church, September tenth. I'm looking for a motion to approve the Trinity United Methodist Church event on September tenth in Tallyran Park.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Rita.
I'll second.
Thanks, Johanna. Discussion on the motion.
Yeah, there were, there were some changes that we needed corrections on by.
That's the second motion.
That's the, okay, you have two motions going.
Yep. Thanks, Randy. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Benir.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean. Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes, assuming that this does not include banner. Otherwise, no.
This was just the date, wasn't it?
Yeah, this was just the date of approval. We're gonna have the next motion for that.
Okay.
Okay? So you have a yes vote?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. The second part of the request is a motion to waive the, well.
It says.
Yeah. Are we gonna change this word?
Yeah, it was meant to be corrected.
It's Tallyran.
Yeah.
Yes, it was Tallyran.
Okay. Motion to waive the Tallyran Park Base, oh, shoot, Tallyran Park Fee. Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Mr. Benir.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean. Ms. Purnell.
Yes, she's nodding her head.
I see. Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Thank you.
So another additional comment, because we did not add the banner issue, that is going to have to go back to the church and come back for a later vote.
For the banner.
For the banner.
Yeah. Can, you'll notify them.
I see in Wendy's email to Alyssa that says, I've indicated special event application, mentions banner application, but I don't see it on the Borough website. If you need that too, please let me know. So it seems like we're having a hard time finding it.
We'll, we'll check into it.
Okay, good point. Thank you.
Would this then go under what we, the most, the motion that we passed?
It'll just come as a separate motion in our next meeting as a request to place the banner.
Okay, all right.
The, the event has been approved, it's now just placing the banner.
Okay.
Okay, so the last item is to consider a letter from Bellefonte Borough and the Bellefonte Authority expressing to Columbia Gas of PA, our disappointment with their starting the Curtain Street work and then pulling out the crew for approximately one month. So I'm looking for a motion and a second.
Some of.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Barb. Thanks, Randy. And maybe I would ask you to just give the public a little reason why we're doing it.
Well, I mean, authority is burdened with the water and sewer lines in that area, monitoring them. You know, gas companies are drilling through that area, drilling underground and, and once in a while, there, there's an issue or leak, you know, that pops up. So it's extra care and extra sets of eyes on water and sewer lines, laterals going into properties, streets, you know, they're, they're in the area. We're just trying to make sure there's no conflict. Neighbors are putting up with items in their yard, you know, on the corner of their property. Yes, it's in the right way, but it's still a burden for them. So with very, very little notice, other than word on the street, basically, we found out that the contractor was leaving by direction from Columbia Gas for about a month after they started the project. So I know the authority was not happy about this and they said we would put it on the agenda for Borough Council to consider.
So let me ask this question. We are not passing this motion at all on the authorities' end. They have to pass their own separate motion.
They already did.
Okay, so what, so our motion is only for the Borough Council. What I heard, the motion was that it was for both of us and we can't do the authority?
No, that, we're working on a joint letter. We're gonna do a joint letter with a Borough Council signature and an authority signature.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Brineer.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Motion passed. Next item. Council member comments for the good of the order. Randy, do you want to start, please?
Uh, yeah, I really don't have anything.
Okay. Joanne?
Yes. Two weeks ago, I asked who gave the Borough a $2,000 donation. Ralph followed up with it, thank you. Our financial director, Lori McGowan, said that this donation came from the Wetzler Funeral Home for the Water Tower Banner Project. She believes that the donation was solicited by Mayor Johnson, so I would like to personally thank both Mr. Wetzler and Mayor Johnson for doing this for the Borough.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Anything else? Deb?
Um, nothing more this evening, thank you.
Rita?
I just had a question about the construction down along the park, what, you know, that PennDOT is doing. I had a resident ask me if we had any idea what caused the issue, and I had never actually thought about that, so I didn't know if anybody had any ideas of what caused the collapse, or if it was just, like, age.
The area that, I can always, I can tell you that the area that collapsed was what they call a gabion basket. It's a metal mesh basket that holds rocks, different sized rocks. That, it was, that style of repair to build the wall was done, they estimated in 1980-something. So 40 years ago, PennDOT did a repair using that style of building a wall, basically. Over time, that metal mesh really rots away or rusts away to nothing.
Okay.
So I think what happened, you know, I don't know if there was rain recently before the wall collapsed or whatever, but it looked like it probably didn't take much to push the wall out.
There was a huge storm in 94.
There was, there was some storms.
That made it collapse.
But we've seen it in other locations where the metal really rusts away, so it just broke loose, and then, once that started, it just all collapsed on itself.
And related to that, are they still ahead of schedule that you're aware of?
I haven't heard. I've been trying to find out. There, there was one scheduler that we said it might be done in July. We haven't heard, you know, I, I did check, and the other scheduler said, no, it's still probably gonna be beginning of August. So I don't have anything, don't have anything definitive.
So they haven't pulled out?
No.
That's good news.
Rita, Randy, and I. Well. And, and Ralph had it as well. Now, we regularly contacted PennDOT, so this needs to be fixed before collapse.
Okay.
So you didn't know about it.
Yes, we did. Now, I was corrected, because when I heard about the, you know, the collapse, I assumed, maybe we all did, the section that we were talking about collapsed, but that section did not collapse.
I was talking about that section as well.
Okay.
Further down.
Well, we, there is some loose stone that fell out of the wall that's kind of handling. That, that PennDOT repaired, but that's not the gabion basket section that collapsed.
That is correct. And the MPO was well aware.
Yes, they were.
We brought it up several times.
Yes, we did. I appreciate that.
About this. That failure of the wall, and they were going to incorporate it into another project.
Yeah, but then all they did is immediately.
So yes, it's been on the radar, but Ralph is absolutely right. Anything else, Rita? Kent?
So we have good news about the runoff area there that goes across Parkwood, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
And the traffic lights coming along.
Yes.
That's good. And, real quickly, only in my three minutes, don't take more than my three minutes.
Oh, you're on the.
For the good of the order, meaning all of us, I'd love to hear about the Armory Building. Like, what's going on? I, I'm just reading your notes here about how they, it sounds like the bids came in much higher, Ralph.
They are coming in much higher. I think Barb was, you know, we have, have a working committee, or a committee that meets periodically of council members and some staff members. Unfortunately, you know, as we saw, saw with some of the other areas of inflation, the costs of getting a project done are much, much higher than we had anticipated. So we're not going to have enough grant funds to do everything. So we're, we're gonna have to break it into phases in order to get everything done. There'll be a first phase, and then a subsequent phase at minimum to get everything done, so.
And there's nobody over there yet, none of our coees?
Well, no, none of us are there.
We're not able.
We have tenants in the building.
Right, yeah. Same ones that we had when we, wasn't it last summertime that we?
We, we added one additional tenant since we acquired the property, but so far, that, that's pretty much what we have, so we have three tenants in the building.
What about the brewery at the Armory Building, the other Armory Building in Belfont?
We're, we're going to meet with the owner of the property to see what the status is. There's not a lot of activity right now. The owners did buy some other businesses, and, and other business in the Borough, and we wanted to kind of see what, what their strategy is with the Armory. So I would say probably between now and the next meeting, we hope to meet with them.
Thank you.
Very sure.
When we talked about the Armory property over here, it's not that we're never gonna do the sprinkler system, it's just gonna have to be put on hold for now.
Yeah, sure. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Johanna?
I just did a quick search of the website, and I cannot find the banner application. It does not come up under a search, so something to work on for next week.
Yes, well. Thanks for sharing that with us. Anything else? Barbara?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
We certainly had a great weekend in Belfont this past weekend. We had the car show, which was huge, had great weather. This, the tasting trail was Sunday, there's a concert in the park Sunday night, so everything went, from what I heard and saw, was very successful. Tons of volunteers, you know, tons of good, you know, people coming in, saying nice things about the community, so very, very successful. Thanks to all the volunteers that make those things happen.
Yeah. Thank you. Shawna, do you, do you have some comments for the good of the council?
Oh, no, if they're for the good, but I'd like to comment again about the microphone quality, and, I don't know, are those little black things that look like ant traps, are those the microphones?
No.
Here, check, check, check.
If we're very close to the speakers, if we can hear better.
No. It's not, they're CNETs.
Shawna, there's.
Johanna, let Ralph answer, okay.
Sorry. They're CNETs' microphones, so you're not going to hear, it's not meant, not designed for people listening to the meeting to hear. We've looked at trying to address the sound system for this room. Unfortunately, we're held up through back orders or whatnot, but we will have a new system in the other room once we move over to the Armory.
Will that include a microphone at the podium?
Yes.
I didn't hear anything.
Yes, it will. Yes, absolutely.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Yeah, if you have an old, if you have an old, old guitar amp, we could, we could use that. We'll put a microphone to it.
You.
Well, bring it in, and we'll get a microphone. I, I think it would work.
Just, just say no, your, your microphone was working very well at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay. We loved your singing.
Not everyone does, so.
And the other thing is, we miss you here, we hope you come back soon, so.
Well, I hope so, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Don?
I'll just follow up with two quick things. Just Kent, to follow up on the Parkview Heights Stormwater Project. We're working on the RFP with Pinoni right now. That project will probably take place sometime this fall, by the time we bid it out, get the bids back in maybe August, early September. The other thing to note is, we found out that it's gonna impact the Tierlick Field, we're gonna have to move the fence in all around the Tierlick Field on that one. The other one I wanted to mention is the first phase of the Spring Street Streetscape Project, the CDBG funding phase, we're ready to go out to bid. Our consultant today, he's got everything prepared, he got it approved through CEDOCOG, so that'll probably be in the newspaper on Sunday. By the time early August rolls around, we ought to have some bids on that, and again, that'll be another fall project that we'll get rolling.
The Dollar General side?
It'll be the opposite side of the Dollar General for the CDBG portion.
Yeah, well, we saw it great, if that all comes.
Don, just a quick question. So there's, there's two different grants that have to go through. One's for one side of the street, and one is for the other side of the street, correct?
Yes, that, the, the Tassie Grant with PennDOT will do the Dollar General, and it'll do West Bishop, so it's all of West Bishop and the Dollar General side, down to Allegheny, where the CDBG is just from the corner down to Allegheny. West Bishop.
Smokers Express side.
Yes. In front of the, in front of the municipal lot, Carrie Ullers and the other building.
He's doing some landscaping as well there.
I saw his harp, yeah.
Yeah, that's gonna be nice.
Do I have my three minutes back?
Yeah?
Can I have my three minutes back?
Yeah, sure.
I, I thought it would, I thought it would come out before this, but I want to congratulate the Belfont Red Raider baseball team for their championship, the state of Pennsylvania, and also the Bald Eagle baseball team, who also won Saturday, so not that far apart, and it's great, that's, I don't think this ever happened before. Good, good for you all, you guys.
Yes.
I, too, want to congratulate Belfont baseball team. I was at the game, and what a fine group of young people. I was really impressed with them, and I know they've played the game a long time together, but I think there's going to be some returning players, so it might happen again next year. More importantly, I forgot to mention, our Borough employee assistant to the assistant Borough manager, I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but Jolie Brooks completed the Center County Leadership Course, so I wanted to congratulate her for that.
Yeah, sure.
And so we're.
I just wanted to say, leadership was a great program, and I really appreciated the opportunity to participate. Very good.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And one other real quick thing, I, I thought maybe, like, Mr. Brineer has a trivia question each week, I may not have this each month, but at our leadership, or at our PSAB conference, the legislators are there, and they hold a panel discussion of, of bills that are pending. And the one that's, that's always the thorn in everybody's side is the radar bill. And the, the history, or the update that we received, and if I misquote something here, jump in and help me out, is that it passed the Senate, it's held up in the House each year, and the Senate has approved it, but the House has, is struggling to get it out and voted on and signed by the governor. So if the public wants to help control the speeds on our streets, our local streets, call your local legislator, encourage that person to move this out of the House and, and vote on this bill. And unfortunately, I don't have the bill number in front of me, I have every other one. But if you just mentioned the radar bill, they are very familiar with it. So write to your senator or congressman and encourage them to follow through with that, that bill, get it out of the House.
Isn't it?
State representative?
It's state representative, it's not federal.
No, it's the state legislatures, yeah. Our, our representative and our senator, the state senator, yeah.
You said Congress, so I was confused.
Oh, well, I apologize for that.
I was confused.
So that's, that's my two cents on that. Other, and the other announcement is, we do have an executive session after this meeting's adjourned. It's a legal matter, yeah.
Shawna, we'll give you a call.
Okay. Any other comments? Motion to adjourn?
Adjourned.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Brackville and Tosti Vacy.